This is Jason Perro, Northboro Board of Selectmen. I call it the order, the Board of Selectmen Meeting for Monday, April 27th, 2020. This normally would have been the night we would be doing town meeting. However, under the circumstances, town meetings postponed and we're conducting a regular meeting with the Board of Selectmen. So before we begin, there's some preliminary matters I have to just go through. This is an open meeting of the Board of Selectmen, being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in Commonwealth to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, the notice of the order is posted on this meeting's agenda. Allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. If you look at the agenda, which is posted on the town website, you will find that there are references to our local cable access government channels, Verizon Channel 30 and Charter Channel 192. There's also a link for you to connect directly for the live stream that's going out, or you can connect to the town's website. Look for the Department of Cable Access Television and you can find the access to the live stream there as well. I want to thank Kathy Delgleish, who's our media services person who's taking care of the technical end of this to stream the meeting and also to Chief, Fire Chief David Parenti, who is the host of the meeting and conducting, conducting it from, from some of our technical aspects there. This meeting is being conducted by Zoom, so I'll remind the participants that they are in view and being recorded. Please be aware that other folks can see you and be careful not to share your screen. Anything on your screen would be visible. I also recall that anything that you broadcast or is captured by your mic will also be captured and recording. As a matter of procedure, I just want to step through the participants in this meeting and ask them to acknowledge by voice that they are connected and able to hear us and we are able to hear them. I'm Jason Perro, Chairman of Board of Selectmen. Dawn Rand, Vice Chair.
President.
Tim Kalin, Clerk.
President.
Leslie Ratain.
President.
Julianne Hirsch.
President.
We have Town Administrator John Cudair.
President.
We have Fire Chief David Parenti.
President.
We have Police Chief William Liver.
President.
We have DPW Director Scott Sharpton-Tier.
President.
We have, let me look around, Casey Mellon, Health Agent. I didn't hear you, Casey.
Is it?
Thank you. Liz Triteak, who's Senior Services Director, Senior Center Director, excuse me.
President.
Thank you. And we have June David Forrester, Director of Family and New Services. June, can you acknowledge, please?
June is having some difficulty with her audio. She is present.
Okay.
She may, she may take over my seat if necessary to do her presentation.
Okay.
Having a little technical difficulties.
Thank you very much, John. Also, we are joined by Karen Chapman, who's the President of Corridor 495 Chamber of Commerce. She's here to offer some insights on options for businesses to make their way through this series of events. So just to go over a few brief ground rules, which we've used that are other remote meetings. As Chair, I will go down through the agenda and introduce each speaker for each item. The speaker will make their presentation and after they conclude, I will go down through the members of the board to ask for any comments or questions that they might have. Please hold your comments or questions until you're recognized. Meantime, typically you may want to mute your microphone when you're not speaking. And please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps us generate accurate meeting minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you. And if you have a question or comment about another member's question or comment, please direct your request through the Chair and wait for me to acknowledge you before you ask your question. This meeting will not feature public comment, but we do have on the agenda an item to consider and schedule what would be an open public input session dedicated for that purpose, keeping that separate from our Selectmen meetings where we may have other business that we're conducting. And I believe that concludes the logistics of the meeting manner that we will conduct it. I can proceed now. So I will ask for the first item on the agenda, approval of April 13th, 2020 meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of the April 13th, 2020 meeting minutes as submitted.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? I think I just had one correction under the list of attendees. I didn't notice this until just now. Under the list of attendees for the meeting, there's a misspelling of one of the attendees' last names. With that minor correction, that's the only thing I have to suggest. Any further discussion? Hearing none. This, I forgot to mention earlier, because we're conducting the meeting remotely, all votes will be by roll call. So for this vote for the meeting minutes, Julianne Hirsch. Leslie Ratain.
Aye.
Tim Kalin.
Aye.
Dawn Rand.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. So the meeting minutes are accepted unanimously. The next item update regarding COVID-19 response. We have two presenters tonight. Karen Chapman is the first presenter, President of Corridor 495 Chamber of Commerce. She'll give us an update on funding resources for small businesses and letter of support for increased funding resources for small businesses. So with that, Karen, I invite you to make your presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Jason, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen and John Cudair for inviting me for this great opportunity to talk a little bit about why we're all here to support small business and all the efforts the chamber has been making. And most importantly, John and I have been having ongoing conversations for probably over 10 or 15 years now. We regularly stay communicated about things of what we can do to support business and there have been many opportunities that I've come across the board to show our support for a single tax classification, but these are unusual times and it has been very important for me to stay communicated with your town leaders, especially John. I've talked to Kathy Jubert and a few others and it's really important for us to continue to communicate to the business community at large. All the financing that's available for them, all the resources that are available to the, to them as a small business community. So let me start by saying, we do cover the towns of Westboro, Northboro, Southboro, Shusby and Grafton. When we formed this chamber, it was Westboro-Northboro Chamber. And over the last 20 years, we've grown substantially. We have over 500 members of our chamber and a good part of that community is the Northboro community. Quite often throughout the years, we do a lot. Sometimes the biggest celebrations in the form of ribbon cuttings to celebrate grand openings. And I have to tell you that a lot of your small business community is a big part of our chamber. And most importantly, all members are important, but Wegmans is one of our biggest supporters of our chamber and sponsors of programs that we are being able to offer programs to the small business community. So that's very important as a good. What I'd like to say is small businesses are always trying to support everything that's happening in our communities, all the special events that are being run by your town or even by the chamber. So nobody's got hit harder more than everybody, but the small business community is taking a huge hit. And I've had a lot of conversations with our members almost daily. And John and I are often talking about what can we do to support the small business community? So just to let you know, since this started and we went into what I'd like to call at-home quarantine, which was from March 24th, when I sent my own staff home is we, as a chamber, has constantly been communicating to our members through the channels that we have through our email marketing and also through social media, what we can do to support. And a lot of that has been about the financing relief programs. You've heard a lot about the payroll protection program and the economic injury, excuse me, injury disaster loan program. So now we're going through those programs consistently quite fast. Payroll Protection Program ran out quite quickly. Today, a lot of our business members were able to reapply. The problem with that is a lot of the members that were not able to get the funding in the first round, those applications are going through first. So if you're kind of late in the game, I'm not sure there's going to be enough money left for you if they're still supporting the first round of applicants. I work weekly with the US Chamber of Commerce. We have weekly phone calls and updates. We are already starting on that fourth round of funding, which is to really try to keep supplies in the payroll protection program and continue to be able to offer those resources to small business. And as far as the IDAL loan, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, waiting to hear from the Small Business Administration when that's open, available, that capped that money in the first round. They didn't in the second round, third round, they're capping that money because it runs out so quickly. The money's going to be gone very quickly. So we are continuing to work with Congress. A letter that was sent out and a shout out to John and Leslie who've responded very quickly about those letters to lend your voice when we ask for those letters of support, which I'm going to say to you as the Board of, as the Board of Directors, one way you can support is every time you receive an email from me or through John via me, if there's a way you can lend your voice into getting more resources for small business, please do so. We have direct, we all have direct vehicles to Congressman McGovern and Markey and Warren, and we continue to rally our members and supporters to let them know that we need more funding for our small business members. They're getting hit hard and they're not able to get all the money that's available to them and we're going to continue to rally for that support. So I'm here to tell you that fourth package that's going out, just as you, that I should share with you. The Chamber of Commerce has not been able to apply for the Payroll Protection Program. We're continuing to fight hard so that we can get the money to continue to support small business too. We need the money to stay in business too. So everybody's being impacted by that. But along the way, the chamber has been offering free webinars to anybody who wants to learn about all the programs that are available out there. We've hosted them on the CARES Act. We hope, we have hosted them on the Economic Injury Loan Program. We've sent out FAQs on the Payroll Protection Program. Any resource that comes through the Commonwealth comes to us first and we keep disseminating that information. But we're also hosting informational programs on how to run your business through this pandemic, how to stay in business during this quarantine, some stress management, some anxiety, some mindfulness. It's hitting hard. And so as a community, we just keep bringing information and free webinars to all of our members. Now, I want you to know, it's been free and available to all of our members during this time. We're not even charging for any things that we're doing. But to help the business community at large, we've now discounted hugely anything so that they can participate on our programs. So if you're not a member of our chamber currently, it's $20, you can participate in any program. But if you want information and want to get on our email list, I invite any business community to contact us. We'll put you on our email list, receive the information that's available to us that you can participate. We have 10,000 contacts on our email list. We are constantly trying to drive the information out there. As a chamber, as a Board of Directors, we are here to support any business, whether you're a member of the chamber or not at this time. We do have over 500 members, but we are here as a service to keep business community, the small business community especially, here to get through this crisis together. So it's continuous to run the programs that we know that are, to keep our members in business. We did run a program about managing cash flow. We had a high attendance over that because people are looking for the information that can keep them in business. So that's what we're here as a chamber to do. We are here to help your community. I want to shout out Leslie. I know you've been following us on Facebook and all my emails and we just launched, and I just talked to John about this today. A new Facebook campaign about being chamber strong and supporting local business. We are going to put a post together that suggests that we are Northboro business strong. And we're showing the faces of these people who represent this business with a lot of positive messaging and tag their businesses out there. The first post that we did reached over 2,500 people and continuing to grow. So we are continuing to send those positive messages that as a business community, we're here. We're continuing to offer programs that promote business. We're running virtual networking events weekly so that businesses can promote their business, that they're open, that they can share referrals with each other. There's lots of opportunity. And we just asked people to visit our website at corridor9.org, check out our calendar events, contact me at the chamber. We just want to continue to be a resource to all of them. And as I said, as a Board of Directors, I will ask for your support of letters of campaign to Congress for more funding. And I also want to let you know that one of the things that's going out tomorrow is the Metropolitan Area Planning Council is developing a survey. And what they want to see is to gauge the economic impact of COVID on the local businesses throughout the region. I'm going to be sending that email out. I'll give that to John. I'd like to ask you to complete that. They're going to share and segment each chamber's information so we can get it out there to let people know what that impact has been on our region. But more importantly, that information's going right to the lawmakers. So we want to continue to say we're hurt, we're hurting. We need their support throughout this process. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Karen. I appreciate all that. And I certainly appreciate the the extension of services or opportunities to businesses that may not already have been members of the chamber.
Absolutely. Yeah, you know what? We all want business to be here when this is over and and we know that they will be here. And so each community has its own strength of businesses. And like I said, I want to do more celebrations of business, not of closing of business.
Right, right. Thank you. John, do you have something you'd like to add there?
Well, I just wanted to add in here that it's important for folks to know the, the Chamber of Commerce is our business arm, our affiliate as, as a local government. And as Karen said, we've worked together for 15 years now. And we have an excellent relationship with the chamber. In my opinion, they're one of the most active chambers. The level of resources and engagement that they have for their membership is fantastic. But if you're a local business, if you're a small business in Northboro and you're not a member of the chamber, we strongly encourage you to become a member and, and/or to participate in all of the great workshops and programs that they've put on. You know, as a local government, we're very limited in what we can do. And so I know many of you have received inquiries from small businesses saying, hey, what, what can the town do to financially support us? And the hard reality is, we can't. The town of Northboro, just like any municipality, we can only do what the state government allows us to do through our charter and through the general laws and the Commonwealth regulations. And that means, you know, if we cannot, we are legally prohibited from providing tax relief to businesses or doing any special incentive programs for businesses. It would require literally an act of the legislature. And so that's why everything that we do, we do it working through the chamber. So in any community that you see where the town is trying to help out businesses, it's always done with a business association or a chamber, which are private organizations because they can do things that, that we cannot. Now, what we can do to support them are things like sending letters of support. We've had meetings and been in contact with Congressman McGovern specifically over the Payroll Protection Program and the Small Business Loan Program. It's like speaking to the choir. He's very supportive of, of obviously those programs and has been. But, but what we've done is we've tried to make every resource that's available to small businesses on our, through our webpage. So although we're not directly related, we have put links to the Corridor 9 programs as well as all the Small Business Association, the Payment Protection Program. So we're a kind of a pass-through to make sure that people can access those things readily through our webpage, if not through the chamber's webpage. But I can't stress enough that, you know, that's where you want to be to get resources and the chamber's done a great job of discounting a lot of these workshops and programs right now because they, they recognize the need. And it's a good opportunity for small businesses to, if you haven't been involved with the chamber, to become involved with them for networking, for support, for resources and for help and assistance in accessing some of these, some of these financial programs. But the town of Northboro cannot do that in and of itself. Now, what we can do, and I'd like to kind of rule this out tonight, is we have begun working and we've been working for a couple of weeks on this. And actually, I was talking to Karen about this a couple of weeks ago. But we, we are putting on our webpage and our press release will be going out tonight. And, and the initiative is support Northboro businesses. And basically, as I said, we can't provide financial assistance to businesses. We can act as a conduit for information about programs and resources, which we've been doing from day one. But with this initiative, we have a website or we've added a link on our website to Northboro businesses that are remaining open during the pandemic. So if you're either an essential business, primarily grocery, pharmacy, food service, and you're open, we want the residents in Northboro to know that you're open. Any other business that is open online, again, legally operating, if you would like to be promoted through our website, or at least to have that information out there. We have created a new website, I'm sorry, a new email address and it's called shoplocal, no space, at town.northboro MA.us. So if you email shoplocal, then you can submit your information to us in terms of what services you have available. And we'll put your contact information and your website in there. And so if somebody in Northboro is interested in, in a service, they can check our website and, and see if there's a Northboro friend, a Northboro business, small business, and we would encourage you to support all the chamber businesses. But you know, in terms of the town of Northboro, you know, we're trying to support Northboro specific small businesses. A perfect example is Takeout Tuesday. Chamber's been promoting, you know, if you're going to order takeout, takeout Tuesday, try to do that. We got a little twist on that. If you're going to do takeout Tuesday, we hope you'll do it from a Northboro resident, from a Northboro business rather. But you should be supporting all the chamber businesses because it's really a regional impact and they all support one another. So again, that's what we're looking to do. Again, promote local businesses. We got a press release that's going out this evening. So there's a limited number of businesses up on the website right now and it's reliant upon the businesses to let us know that they'd like to be listed. So we started with the ones that we regulate. So the Board of Selectmen issues common victory licenses, so food permits and liquor licenses. So we had great contact information for those businesses. So that went out right away. And then we've been trying to work and get the word out through the chamber and Karen is going to help us get the word to all Northboro businesses that are interested in being listed on our, on our, kind of our sub page here. But if anybody's aware of a business that would like to be listed, again, that shoplocal email, again, I'll say it one more time. It is shoplocal, no space, at town.northboro MA.us. And if you send your contact information there, we'll get you up on our webpage and on an ongoing basis, as your situation changes, you let us know. We're going to add businesses, we may remove businesses and we may modify what, you know, what they have available to us. So, so again, we're trying to support our local businesses. The chamber, in my opinion, has done a phenomenal job, but I don't think anybody can deny that businesses, just like a lot of our residents are having a difficult time right now. So we're trying to do everything that we can to, to help folks and promote folks, particularly promote the businesses. But, but if anybody has any other ideas, we're certainly open to them. But as I said, we are limited legally in terms of what we can do. And, and even on this page is a disclaimer that says we're not promoting or endorsing any of these businesses. So if your competitor's up there and you're not, you're a Northboro business, let us know. We'll get you up there. We just want to make the residents aware that these businesses are open. And if you're going to seek services or products, we hope you'll look at Northboro first, then the Corridor 9 Chamber Membership and, and everybody needs, needs the support. So.
You know, thank you for saying that too, John, because on our website is the, we have a business directory and all the Northboro businesses, if you type up Northboro, they come up. So it's a great way to say that. So that's why everybody can find a business and to do business with them. Like you, we've been promoting businesses that are open. We're trying to find out everybody who's open. It's essential to support them. It's essential to get the businesses closed open as soon as possible when we get through this pandemic, but we're a partnership. And John and I have always talked that way and, and I appreciate your support and all the information that we send out to you to get our voices heard so we can get the resources we needed to get back to business as soon as we're allowed to get back to business and, and whatever that's going to look like with new rules, which we know it's going to. But we're going to get through this and we're, we're strong together and I appreciate having a working relationship with all of you. And we're here to support your businesses. So please rely on the chamber to do that.
Great. Thank you very much, Karen. Thank you very much, John. I'll go to the board members now and see if you have any questions or comments. Dawn, I'll start with you.
I'd just like to thank Karen for all her efforts. I've been able to take advantage of some of the offerings and I appreciate everything that the chamber does for the town. So.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you, Dawn. Tim Kalin?
Yeah, thanks Karen for, for coming in. My, my business is actually a member of the chamber. And every, all the information that they've, that the chamber has been providing as, as we've gone through, this has been extremely, extremely helpful. First of all, because it's, it's good information. You can trust the information that's coming. So it's, it's, that, that is very helpful. The only other thing I would add is, you know, as, as much support as everybody is offering to small businesses. I think the number one thing that the people of Northboro can do as a community to support small businesses is spend money. If you have the ability to buy stuff, to, to get takeout, to buy gift cards, to tip people. I know the number one most important thing right now to small businesses is cash. And so anything that anybody in the community can do to help, that's, that's the best way to, to support businesses right now. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Leslie?
Karen, thank you. I know you're very busy and I appreciate the fact that you're here with us tonight. I know residents will be happy because they'll see this on replay if they're not watching this right now. And I appreciate the outreach that you're doing and obviously trying to reach businesses who are not members of the Corridor Chamber. To further appeal to them to want to join though for further benefit, can you explain what the chamber will do for them?
Sure.
Because I would love it if they could actually be interested in joining, joining and see the benefits of, of beyond this whole situation.
Thank you for saying that. And so right now, I mean, what's really affordable right now is that we do offer a monthly plan because we do know it's hard hitting. And so basically it's $29 a month to join the chamber right now. Membership's $3.55 for five employees or less. And then there's for our corporate members, we have a special rate for them. But those four members that are much larger with 100 employees are far more than that. But we host 70 programs and events a year and right now everything's virtual. But most, some of those are face-to-face. One of our largest events is our Business Expo, which is to bring the business community on display so that they can promote their business. Typically, that was going to be held in April. That's 1,000 people that walked through that show, but it's an opportunity. And I have to say, a lot of your restaurants participate in that particular business, a lot of our small business, just to put their business on display and so that people can collect leads and get business. So that's one of our largest events, which right now that we're looking at either modifying it or pivoting our business to do what we can do in a different way over the summer or even in the fall. The other things that we do is the educational workshops that we're doing. As a member, they're always free when we do educational workshops and a lot of them are always about how to run your business, professional and business development. And some of the other things is our specialized groups. So we have a women's professional group that's designed for all of our women members. And we have over 100 women that participate in that program monthly. It's called Business Forward Females. And because we are trying to nurture the young generation to be civic leaders and business leaders, we have a young professionals group called Help Hype 9, which stands for Helping Young Professionals Engage in the Chamber. Very proud of this young, of this group. A lot of them are members of my board, but they run their own networking events, their own professional development programs. They're a key part of our community and they are great entrepreneurs. So we're very excited to be part of our community too. And then some of our customized business design, some customize, customized groups is our business referral groups. They join Just to Share, share referrals to each other. And something that's really critical now is our Business Owners Dialogue Group. So these are small to medium sized businesses that get together to share information on how to run your business better and use this, other members of the group as peer advisory group to get ideas and support and how To get ideas and support and how they can run their business better. So those are some of the key programs of the Chamber. And largely is, is most of you know, I'm a big advocate for a voice around behalf of the business community. We run legislative breakfast meetings. We work very closely with our uh, state representatives, congressmen and legislators. Talking about those issues that are impacting local business, whether it's on transportation, healthcare, minimum wage. All the issues that are facing them, we're here to talk about them and get them a direct communication line to our state legislators and. Um, who's been very key and very vocal and very involved. So. We, we have a direct line to all of them, which I know you do too. So, but we like to host a lot of events with them. So advocacy, driving economic development, um, spearheading business development programs. And obviously helping them to promote their business um, and get their uh, so that we support doing business locally. That's really what we're talking about, supporting each other and doing business locally. So thank you for that question, Leslie.
You're welcome. And if someone feels the need to join or the desire to join as soon as possible, what is the best and quickest way to do that?
So right on our website, it's called quarternine.org. That's the quickest way and um. You'll hear from one of our office members will contact you immediately. We have three new members that joined last week. Um, that see um, how important it is to be involved because of all the resources we're able to provide them.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, Julian?
Oh, thanks. I have nothing to add except to thank the presenter. Thanks for uh, these great programs that you outlined.
Thank you, Julian.
Thank you, Julian. And uh, Karen, I'll add my thanks. I think this information has been very good and very helpful and we certainly appreciate uh. All the work that's being done. Um, I think uh, people don't always really understand uh, how much is going on behind the scenes. Uh, in addition to whatever the public presentation is. And so certainly appreciate Corde's uh, continued effort to try to. Reach businesses, give them the assistance they need and try to assist them through this uh, this period. So. Thank you very much for uh, for being here with us tonight. Uh, it was very, very helpful.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. And uh, John, you're on speed dial. Let's be honest.
Karen, I can't, just thank you for all the information and support. Anytime someone calls with questions about these programs, that's where I send them, so.
And I'll continue to provide those links that you can put on your website. The more information we can share, just locally, globally, just let's get the information out. Let's help each other. That's all I wanna do. So.
Sounds great.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Uh, next item on our agenda is uh, update from June David Fores, Family and Youth Services. And uh, Liz Tratiak, Senior Center Director, uh, Guardian Unwound Community Outreach and Response. Uh, June, would you care to start?
Sure. I'm glad to have this opportunity. You know, when John um, mentioned to talk about um, where we stand and what we've been doing. It occurred to me today that um, one of my staff, good news is she had a baby girl. And everyone's healthy, but she's gone for a couple of months. So it's myself. And a part-time nineteen-hour position who's been holding down the port here. So in terms of what we've been doing, we quickly adapted when we learned that the buildings were gonna be closed. And we switched over to calling our clients and some of them like to reach out through email. So we quick, quickly shifted gears. It started to do that. Um, we also are still providing all the services that we typically do. Counseling, case management, fuel assistance application, food stamp application. Um, and lots of referrals. Last year, we. Got over five hundred calls and referred people out to over a thousand agencies and organizations. I imagine that's gonna be um, increased this year because of what's going on. Um, the other thing we've been doing is our community partnerships have never been more important. We have real good working relationships with a lot of organizations in town. But I'm finding, and it's great, we have that base relationship with them. Cause I'm just finding that we, you know, we really need them more than, than ever before and they've stepped up to the plate. So. Some examples are Helping Hands. They have the Holiday Program. And they have the um, Medical Loan Equipment Program. The one that we access the most is an emergency fund that they have. So for instance, if someone's behind on their electricity and they get um, an, a disconnect notice. We're able to approach Helping Hands Emergency Fund and they're able to pay their light, light um, bill and, or electric bill. And so it doesn't get shut, shut off, which is huge. We've probably did about eight of those last year with them. In the last two weeks, we've done five already. With people who have lost their jobs already and been laid off and getting behind on bills. So um, one of the things I'll talk about later is, you know, organizations that if people are interested in donating. The ones I would, I would like to highlight and Helping Hands is one of them. Jane O'Toole told me that they have maybe three more families they could help out. Um, before they run out of funds in that program. So I'd really like to do a, a pitch for them. Um, the Food Pantry is still open. They've been creative and doing curbside pickup. And they've tried to limit it to like six volunteers so that people continue to be safe and not have a lot of people in and out. The other organization I wanna mention is, I don't know if you've all heard, but Sirloin. Has been Tuesdays and Thursdays have been giving out free meals. And when I talked to a contact over there on Thursday, on Friday. She told me in one day they served one thousand and eighty-eight meals, free meals. So I called her back today to make sure I didn't have the incorrect number with that. But four to five hundred of those were for Northborough residents. And then they also support like hospitals and hospital staff, St. Vincent and UMass and also biotech forums that are trying to. Find a cure for this. So they're doing an outstanding job. The other thing I do is I maintain ongoing communication with my colleagues in other towns. It's been extremely helpful to hear what other people are doing and how they're handling things. Um, and the other thing I wanna mention is that the Fuel Assistance Program. So the Senior Center and Family and Youth Services. Takes applications at our office and helps people apply so they don't have to go into framing them. So. SMOC agreed that we could do the applications over and email them, email the application to them, which is great. The other thing they just told us is they're extending the deadline to May twenty-ninth. And the reason that's important is because people who are losing their jobs right now. Who may not have been eligible for it last year, you know, this past year are now eligible. So it's with a lot of foresight that they did that extension. So we really appreciate that on behalf of residents in need. There's also some people that we've applied in the past that just miss it by like a thousand dollars. So um, this is gonna be great. We'll help out a lot of residents. Um, the other thing is we've been doing a lot of work with the other town departments. We did a joint presentation uh, with the Senior Center with Liz, who's, I gotta remember is new. Cause it seems like she's been here a long time. We've worked a lot together. She's doing a great job. And so we did a joint presentation on cable, talked about our services and really stressed to people that even though the building is closed. We're open for service. So I just wanna reiterate that if anyone just needs to call, even just to talk to another human being, we're here. So our calls get transferred to us. So um, don't be afraid to give us a call. The Northborough Police have also been really helpful. We've had some residents who need to be checked up on. And they, you know, they've stepped up, they've helped us with that. Um, and of course cable TV um, has been great. They're welcoming us to do shows. And um, it's a nice way to get our face out there. And Liz has already been introduced to the whole community through that show. Um, so the last thing I wanna mention and then I'll take questions is. That, you know, we've talked about, John has asked Liz and I to be on a committee to. Look at relief funds for people. And we have a lot of pockets that we can uh, already access, like the trustees, the benevolent fund. Um, we can present families to them and they've been really helpful. So that's one group. Uh, you can actually, people can actually donate to the town. Of Northborough to go into these benevolent funds that, you know, have helped pay people's couple of months of mortgage or um. If they're about to lose their house, they've helped out with some rent. So it's a really great resource to have. Um, then there's the Food Pantry that I mentioned. And they're still open, as I said. And I actually approached them about applying for a grant through Metro West Health Foundation. Because they came out with a um, COVID nineteen emergency grant. But at that point, the director said she had enough funds. So I think the community truly support, supports them. But down the road, you know, I can only imagine this getting worse. So hopefully they'll revisit that. I think that's it for now.
Okay. Thank you very much, June. Um, I think what I'll do is go next to Liz for um, for the information from the Senior Center. And then we'll come through, back through with a rounded questions about these services.
Hi, thank you.
Uh, Liz, uh, uh, let us know what's going on at the Senior Center.
Sure. Um, first, thank you for the opportunity to uh, let you know about the large initiative that we're undertaking here at the Senior Center. For our Northborough seniors. Um, we began several weeks ago by taking stock of all the available resources that we have, all the different benefits that are available to Northborough residents. As you know, they're continually changing. Everything is kind of a day-to-day. Uh, a change here. So we're continually updating the resources. We're putting it out on the website. We're putting them in our newsletter. We're getting the information onto cable as best we can. We're keeping that updated. The next big thing that we did is we identified all of our at-risk uh, residents here. Um, we reached out to them all individually and we set up all plans for scheduled contact to ensure everyone's well-being. Now our at-risk residents are the people who we would typically have a lot of um, interaction with here at the Senior Center for various reasons. Either through outreach or through um, supporting their, them through some of our programs here. The next big part of the initiative that we've undertaken is calling all of the um, senior residents in town. Which has been huge because there's a few thousand. Um, we've worked our way through over eighty right now, we're working through seventy and above. Um, and by the end of the week, we'll be working on sixty to sixty-nine age range. And I'm pleased to report so far, we haven't encountered any major crisis. Um, everyone seems to be doing relatively well that we've come into contact with. Uh, we are actively keeping in touch with all of our community partners that um, like uh, June mentioned. Um, the partners in the community who develop or deliver services too. So that's um, the Food Pantry. Bay Path Elder Services, who's our local aging services access point. Um, they also do the Meals on Wheels. Um, Family Services, Police and Fire. We're all, we're all collaborating to make sure that every senior has all of their needs met. Um, getting the assistance that they need. We're even doing um, an outreach initiative too, to assist our adult caregivers of those with dementia in the community. So we're keeping in contact with them weekly to ensure that they're doing okay. Because caring for a loved one full-time who has Alzheimer's or dementia can be really taxing. Um, so we're doing that weekly. Uh, we've moved several of our programs and our support groups to a virtual format, either um, through Zoom or through uh, telephone conference calls. And we just wanna really encourage any senior, and we're doing that through cable, the web, mail, telephone. Anyone can contact us whether they're feeling isolated or lonely, or just anyone who's looking for some sort of social connection. We're here and we can talk to anybody. Um, I guess lastly, I'd like to say that. Even though our programs are on hold right now, all of our Senior Center staff is here and working. Um, we have, we have the ability to tap into so many different resources and benefits for our Northborough seniors. That we can help with um, food delivery, nutrition assistance, heating assistance. Um, tap into some emergency, emergency funds like June mentioned, medical equipment loan, housing resources. We're still doing insurance assistance. We're assisting with taxes. Um, and any social emotional support or caregiver support, we're still here for uh, folks who need it. Um, I, I'm, I feel very confident in um, this community. It seems like it's just really well set up to help seniors here. And it, it's just been great to come to this community and when everyone's collaborating and working together and all the departments are in touch uh, with each other weekly. It just seems like it's been, uh, it's really great, really great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Liz. John, uh, do you have anything to round out that part of the presentation?
Who did you ask that to?
Uh, John Codair.
Okay.
Is there anything you wanted to add, John?
Sure, thank you. Uh, you, you broke up a little bit there. That's why she was asking. Yeah, so, so two things uh, that I'm hoping people will take away uh, from this uh, uh, presentation this, tonight. And again, uh, both Liz and June are trying to hit all venues. They're doing things individually. They're working through groups. Uh, they've got a Cable Access uh, Show or Episode. Uh, it's about a half an hour long that they go through all the services. They did a wonderful job there. So I guess two things. One, i- if you're in Northborough and you need help, please call us. We're here, we're open and we're able to assist. Uh, so for the Family Youth Services Department, you can dial five oh eight, three nine three, five zero two zero. For the Senior Center, the main line there is five oh eight, three nine three, five zero three five. If you're on the other end of the spectrum though, and you're okay and you have resources and you would like to help out. Maybe some folks that aren't as uh, lucky as you are in the moment. Um, then uh, as June said, I just wanna reiterate, uh, there's the special, the Town of Northborough Special Benevolent Fund. These are trust funds and the interest is used to support uh, folks in need. Uh, and it's managed through a Northborough Committee appointed by the Board of Selectment with June David Fores as the staff liaison. And you can send that check to the Town of Northborough Special Benevolent Funds, sixty-three Main Street, Northborough. The Helping Hands, uh, the Helping Hands Association is P.O. Box three eight three, Northborough, Mass. Uh, the Food Pantry is thirty-seven Pierce Street, Northborough. And Sirloin's uh, is three sixty-nine West Main Street in Northborough. Um, again, we've had people ask us, hey, are you going to set up a special fund to help folks in need? Uh, and we've tried to communicate to them that we've had this infrastructure and it's in place. And these are longstanding relationships with the, probably the exception of Sirloin's, who's a catering outfit that has shifted over to help uh, residents. Um, but the Food Pantry, Helping Hands and the Special Benevolent Funds have been here for decades. And so they're tried and true. And so again, if you as a Northborough resident wanna help your fellow uh, Northborough uh, folks out. Then we would encourage you uh, to, to donate some funds to those uh, three or four primary uh, uh, organizations. Um, you know, they're, they're tried and true. They're not uh, anything that we're just set up. Um, so these are longstanding uh, relationships and uh, we would direct people there. Uh, certainly you can contribute to any number of uh, of uh, charitable organizations. But if you want resources to help out people in Northborough, those are the ones that we would recommend and, and respectfully uh, direct you to. So uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Appreciate that. The best avenues essentially for us to assist fellow Northborough residents. So. Uh, I'll go through the board now for uh, questions or comments. Uh, and uh, you can do. Uh, I'll go through the board now for questions or comments, uh, and uh you can direct those to either uh. June, Liz, or John, as you feel appropriate, uh, Don Rand.
Oh, I'd just like to thank June and Liz for both coming in. And Liz, with three weeks, it seems like you've done an awful lot of work, so welcome to Northborough and we seem very lucky to have you, so. Thank you, that concludes my.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don, uh, Tim.
Uh, just thank you to, to June and to Liz for all the work that you have been doing as. You know, we get through this pandemic, uh, Liz, welcome to Northborough. Not the ideal situation to be, to be starting out a new position. But from, from everything that, that. Um, you said tonight, it, it certainly sounds like we're lucky to have you, so welcome. That's it for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim, uh, Leslie.
Okay, um, I have three questions, um, first for June. Um, how do most people communicate with your office, do they primarily call, do they email, and which way is the most efficient in terms of you being able to help them? Quickly.
Yeah, direct calls are, are great, um, the email is more for people we have ongoing relationships with. So like to set up a meeting, it's just easier to email each other if we have to reschedule, but either way is fine.
Okay, okay, my second question to you, June, is I know Sirloin Catering has been doing an awful lot. And that's huge what they're doing. And what I wonder about is the summer, because I know that the school department, uh, every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Is distributing lunches to the school kids. So once school is officially over for the school year. I assume that the buses will no longer be doing that, and I'm wondering whether an organization or business such as Sirloin Catering. Is expecting an uptick in what they're going to be asked to do. Or hope that they would do, do you know anything more about that?
I don't, that's a really good question, but they're gonna continue to keep doing this till there's a need. As long as there's a need, and I'm wondering if the superintendent and John. Might, might cover that for the summertime. In terms of, I know the school was doing some stuff, I know ro- Rotary with the school. Was sending some meals in a backpack, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if those programs will continue, but that's a really good question.
Yeah, Nutrition sixty-eight, I think, ends also with the school year, from my understanding. Yeah.
John, did you have something to add to that?
Yeah, so, so, you know, this is a fluid situation, as you all know, uh, our. Our attention and our responses is continuously evolving and uh and moving. And so, uh, I, I guess just backing up for a moment, the good news is that um between the schools, the senior center. And Family Youth Services, we have a pretty good handle on our vulnerable population and we have been in touch with them for weeks and weeks. And so the good news, what we're hearing back, as you heard from Liz, I mean, we're even cold calling seniors. And they've gotten through every senior uh age eighty and over, uh, seven hundred calls plus, so we've made almost a thousand phone calls. At this point, and I think there was one referral to the food pantry. So what we're finding by and large, and this is a great thing, is that, is that our residents are getting the resources and the help that they need. In some form, and a lot of it's coming from family members, neighbors, uh, some of it's coming through uh formalized organizations. Uh, a lot of it's being channeled through Senior Center and Family Youth Services, but the good news is what we're finding. Through all of this outreach, through cable access, through the website, through direct mailings uh that we're sending out to all the seniors. We're finding that people right now are okay, but we also know that this is a, an evolving situation. And so as we look forward, uh, one of the discussions that we've had in the emergency management team has been, uh, what's gonna happen in the summer? What happens when May fourth comes and goes and, you know, everything doesn't open back up again? And so we've been having discussions, and there's actually some discussions at the uh, at the state level too. About continuing through the summer potentially with some of these uh, some of these um, uh meal programs for, for children. So I don't want to speak out of turn, other than to tell you that we're all thinking of this. And we're continually thinking of, of what's gonna happen the next step. And also, we know as the longer this proceeds and goes on, we know that more and more people are going to be impacted and potentially have need. So again, the good news is we seem to be doing well as a community, meeting the needs of our population now. Um, we know that's evolving and we'll continue to assess that situation and we will maneuver to meet those uh changing needs. But uh summertime programs for kids, definitely uh something that we're gonna, we're looking at. Um, and um, as we work with uh Bay Path and uh the, all of the groups. Uh, the Helping Hands, the Rotary, the Interfaith Clergy Group. Uh, again, this is a community response to a community uh issue here or crisis. Um, their situations are changing and evolving, so we're constantly in communication and checking back with them. I, I guess the, the short answer is, uh, we're looking into all of those things and we're constantly talking about. Where are we today, but more importantly and equally is important, but where do we think it's going to be, the needs are gonna be in a week or a month from now? And so we're trying to anticipate those uh, those needs, so I think uh, as, as we evolve, more information will, will come out. We don't have all the answers, but we're seeking, um, we're seeking information. And we're also trying to seek appropriate grant funding uh where available. Um, as a community, um, it's very frustrating for me because we have a couple of avenues, we talked about the Special Benevolent Funds. Those are designed to take in donations and to help folks. But we as a community can't just decide to appropriate funds and direct them to people. For the same reason we can't legally give uh tax breaks to businesses outside of any existing programs. Uh, um, and authority given to us by the state. So we've also had conversations with um, with our legislative delegation about, you know, as things evolve. How can we, how can we make funding available, how can we make um service delivery models uh available? And work more easily for us to, to meet whatever these changing needs are, and again, nobody knows exactly where things are going to be going, we do anticipate. More people are gonna need assistance, and so we're trying to get ourselves and position ourselves to where, uh, to, as a baseball analogy, to where the ball's going to be. Uh, and not wait for the ball to be hit and go chase it, so we're constantly having those conversations, but right now, we're in good shape. Um, moving forward, these are exactly the types of things that we're talking about on a weekly basis with our, with our working group.
And I think that's.
Thank you very much, John. Yep.
And I think that's important for us to be verbalizing here at our meeting. So that people know that these, all these things are being discussed and that there is proactive conversation going on about all these things. So, um, June, thank you very much for being here uh to discuss these things, I appreciate it. And uh Liz, I have one question for you, uh, also welcome to Northborough, glad to have you. Um, you had mentioned that um you've identified all the at-risk individuals. Um, I'm not sure if you explained this, but uh what is the very first thing you then do once somebody like that has been identified?
Sure, um, so our outreach worker is Jocelyn and she has been here for several years, she has a very good handle. On the community and our residents here, so she was very. She easily identified who um, who would be considered at risk based on her assessments, she's a social worker. And um, we called them, she said, we're checking in, uh, we're concerned. Do you have everything you need, we went through our whole checklist, um, just I, just asking if they are prepared. Um, did they have the supplies that they needed, do they have access to food and medications and assistance in the home if they needed it? So we covered all the bases and then asked them, do you want a daily check-in call, do you want a weekly check-in call? How can we follow up and keep this communication open so that you feel socially connected and. Uh, cared for during this time, so that's how we've been approaching it so far and um. Through these calls to all of these senior residents, it's been. It's a large undertaking, but we've also put some people on our radar who we wouldn't normally have contacted. Like John said, we're cold calling these folks, um, many of them are snowbirds and they're not even. In town right now, but some were like, oh, okay, let's, let's put this person on our radar, they're not at risk level yet. But this is somebody who we should follow up with and check in in a month or a couple of weeks from now. So that's been the process, but it's um, it's fluid, it's definitely fluid as the situation changes.
Wonderful, that's huge, thank you so much for explaining that, thanks for your work.
All set, Leslie?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Great, thank you, and uh Julian?
Oh, um, I just would like to say thanks to Liz and, and June for all of the great work you're doing and. It's, I'm sure it's a lot and. Much, much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, Julian. Uh, June and Liz, I'll just add my thanks as well, um, June, uh, you've been a longstanding employee and uh running the services. Very familiar with the town, uh, and that's a very valuable experience for us to uh meet the needs uh that come through Family Youth Services. Liz, this isn't the kind of probationary period we typically have for new employees, but you seem to be doing quite well and uh. Uh, we expect we'll be keeping you on, so, uh, again, appreciating all the effort that's being made for the, for the outreach. I, I, my understanding is that there's a number of people being contacted who may be surprised they're being contacted because they don't feel they have really any need or demand. That they need to make at this time, so, uh, certainly it's a, quite an effort to, to try to capture that entire group. Very smart idea, I think, to work from the higher ages and, and downward, uh, in, in trying to reach the people who may be most in need. So, uh, just very happy to know that um, that kind of effort's being put out, um, and that uh all the people in town. In those risk areas uh are being contacted or uh, or we have awareness of them and are able to. To meet the service needs that they may have. Also, thank you both for the video uh cable shows and everything, that's really a valuable channel, uh, perhaps for some of these people. Might be an avenue that they have, um, if they're not necessarily computer savvy or, or a computer. Uh, internet. Capable, um, so that's certainly a valuable information channel. Uh, to be presenting this information on as well, so thank you both for doing that. I have uh no other questions or comments, um, so just thank you both, uh, John, any final words on this one?
My, my only final words are, you know, um, stay, stay away from social media for your information. And come to the Town of Northborough's official webpage and to refer to the Senior Center and the Family Services because. Um, it's frustrating for us, we see people speculating about needs and speculating about issues that. Um, we have the actual information, we've spoken to the actual folks, we have a pretty good handle on where things are. And so uh speculation is not, uh, is not where we want to spend our time, we want to. Spend our time focused on the actual information and taking care of folks, but I'll just say this, look, if either you or somebody you know needs help. Have them call us, have them call the Senior Center, have them call Family Services, we have a lot of resources at our disposal. And we can, and we can help folks out, and as I said, we're not overrun right now, uh, in terms of uh demand with uh versus what we have for. Resources at the moment, um, but if you need help, reach out, that's why we're here, even though the buildings are closed. Everybody's working and we have uh, and we want to help, you know, the Senior Center staff, uh, Family Services, this is what they do. They, they're here to help and we're here to help, so please reach out, we're, we're, we're glad to be of assistance, thanks.
Great, thank you, John. June and Liz, thank you very much for being here tonight, we really appreciate your attending the meeting and being able to provide this information for us, so, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item for discussion is uh to set the meeting schedule for the Board of Selectmen for uh May through August, meetings including. Discussion of a dedicated public input meeting regarding COVID nineteen, so. As people are no doubt aware, um, as we've been conducting these meetings remotely in the current circumstances, I have. Declined to include the public comment section, um, where it wasn't legally mandated as a consequence of the particular agenda item, uh, such as a public hearing. Um, but we certainly do want to receive the input that people have and toward that end. I had discussed with John the possibility of setting up just a dedicated meeting for that purpose only, uh, where we could. Uh, try to take in public input and be responsive to questions that the public might have. John, would you care to uh talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so uh, your normal meeting schedule would have been uh, uh, May eleventh, and so we were trying to work in something. Uh, in between, and we were trying to do something earlier in that, in that week. Um, but ultimately, uh, we decided to, uh, we, we settled on Thursday, May eleventh. Uh, because everybody was available and it seemed to work, um, so right now.
John, is, is that May seventh?
May seventh, yes.
Yes, okay.
So May seventh at six PM uh is the, the date and the time. And it will be duplicative uh of a lot of information that you receive at your regular meetings, including this one. Um, we're envisioning having the, the board, but having a basically a panel of uh, of staff, including uh the superintendent. Kind of walk through and talk about, you know, the things that we're doing, uh, provide some information, direct people to resources. And then, uh, and then provide a uh, a place for folks to, or a mechanism for folks to submit questions, and so. Uh, we are putting out a dedicated email uh, uh, address through the, our COVID nineteen page. And you can go, uh, it, we'll be putting that up shortly, um, but it'll be a dedicated uh, uh, email address. For questions and the ideas you'll, the folks can send in their questions, we'll compile those and then we'll uh through a uh. A Q and A format, uh, on the seventh, we'll, we'll uh go through the questions and try to address. You know, whatever, uh, whatever folks uh want to talk about. And again, this is gonna be, some of this will be duplicative of information you had at your last meeting, information you had at this meeting. Um, but uh, but if people have uh burning questions or, or, or things that they'd like to convey. Want to give them a mechanism to, and a, and a format to do that constructively, um, we went with the email, uh, yeah, or submitted questions. Uh, because it's uh more manageable for us, you know, one of the issues, I'm sure folks have been reading, is uh holding public hearings. And taking public uh input live at meetings, uh, it gets a little tricky with uh people hacking and uh. And so we're working on security things that are around that, eventually we'll get back to where we were. Um, but uh, but allowing folks to send in and submit uh questions. And ideally, look, if you have a question, it's helpful for us if you, if you send it in ahead of time, it, it allows us to formulate a, you know, a good, a good thorough response for folks. And so that was our vision uh on the, to do on the uh, May seventh, uh, at six PM, and again. It's trying to broaden the number of folks and depending on if it's um. Appropriate or not, we may bring in some of our community partners to be available too, to answer some uh, answer some questions as well.
Thank you very much, John. A meeting schedule, um, as it's proposed then. Is this uh. Public input forum uh to be held on May seventh. Uh, a regular Selectman meeting on May eighteenth, which is the week before what would be Memorial Day weekend. Um, another meeting on June eighth, uh, about two weeks following that, and then. Uh, TBD whether or not we would be meeting on June twenty-second, I think. Circumstances being what we, uh, what they are, we're just going to set these next few dates and then uh kind of adapt the circumstances and see what. Uh, what's required in terms of uh additional meetings, um, taking account, of course, that uh. We have at the moment postponed uh annual town meeting and uh, we'll see how that plays out, whether that will take place as uh. Currently scheduled or um, or whether that requires an additional postponement uh due to social distancing concerns and health reasons, so. Could I have a motion uh for purposes of discussion?
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to set the meeting schedule as follows, May seventh, COVID nineteen, community outreach and input. May eighteenth, regular meeting, and June eighth, regular meeting.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, do I have any further discussion? I can go through the members, Leslie, I saw you raise your hand, so I'll go to you first.
Just real quickly, um, it's so really the May seventh, um, Community Outreach Meeting replaces the May eleventh, so there would be no meeting on May eleventh.
That's correct.
Correct.
I just wanted to reiterate that, okay.
Julianne?
Yeah, I have a question, is, is there a reason for the six o'clock's time on that? I, I, my concern is that I think a lot of people know that we meet at seven. And I was just wondering if there's a, like a scheduling thing or?
If, through the chair, if I may, yeah, we were just trying to start earlier to accommodate uh some of our other guests. Um, and uh, and the thought process was that it would give us uh, you know, a little more time earlier on to, to, to have the discussion. Again, it's a, it's sort of a. Again, it's a, it's sort of, it's a special meeting. It's not a regular meeting. So it's a Thursday night. That's all. I mean, if people want to push it, we'll, we'll see if we can work with everybody to seven. But the idea was to try to make it actually available a little earlier for folks. And we thought the earlier time would be easier for people to participate than something later.
Okay, I, I think it's very important to have, to have guests and, and, you know, extend the panel. And also, I'm, I love the idea of emailing the questions and that'll be great. So that's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Julianne. Tim, any quick comments?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Dawn, any comments?
No.
I have no other comments to make on this. I'm satisfied with the schedule. If there are no more comments, again, this is a roll call, roll call vote. Julianne?
I.
Leslie?
I.
Tim?
I.
Dawn?
I.
And I also vote I. So that is unanimous. And we have our meeting scheduled for the next three meetings. Next item up is reports. Julianne, we'll start with you.
Yes, thank you. So as the pandemic continues, I'd like to thank the first responders, essential workers and healthcare providers for their great sacrifices. I'd also like to thank the community for listening to the governor's recommendations on physical distancing and other safety measures. It's said many times every day, but we really are all in this together. And I have a second item on a totally different topic. The Historical Society, which as you all know, is, is located right in the center of town, is doing a very interesting project. And I'll read something that they are used in their advertising for this. "As keepers and collectors of our town's history, the Northborough Historical Society would like to collect and preserve your personal reflections, daily experiences, stories and photographs of this pandemic's effect on the community and your life. These memories are history in the making and will give future generations a look back at this unprecedented time in our town, state and country." So if you, if you can take a minute, I think we all have a story to share. And you can go on their website to find their contact information or their mailing address. You probably will have to fill out something that, that says that they can use the information in programs or publications, but it's a, I think it's a very necessary project. And I just have one question. As we are moving forward, I see that some committees are starting to meet. And I was wondering, for those who are all liaisons to committees and boards, and how, where are we with helping those committees start to meet again?
Yeah, so, yeah, so we're working with MIS and the key is, the big thing for us is the security. So although we have over 30 boards and committees, only a handful of those are actually staffed. So have a staff liaison. So, so one of the things that we are struggling with is trying to set up protocols to make sure that people are doing things correctly and that we're maintaining security during these, during these meetings. So the listserv right now, I'm, I'm on probably three or four different listservs. This is a hot topic right now amongst the communities en masse, is, you know, getting boards and committees back to meeting again. And so, so that's something that we're working on right now. We hope in the next couple of weeks to start opening that back up in some kind of a priority order. But the big issue and the big, the big problem here is, as I said, most boards and committees don't have a staff liaison, which means the chairperson or somebody has to be responsible for hosting, recording, following all the appropriate protocols and maintaining security so that, you know, people don't hack into meetings and cause other types of problems. So, so that's kind of where we're at at the moment.
Okay.
John? Julianne, any further?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Leslie?
Okay, it's hard to thank people because there's, thank everybody. Everybody's doing something. So I almost feel like it's a, it's a foregone conclusion. But I just again want to thank residents and all the town departments, businesses and frontline personnel for everything that everybody is doing. It's just phenomenal. And I think the way Northborough is reacting to all the advice from Governor Baker, I think, is, is fantastic, based on what I'm seeing. I also received an email from Walmart's corporate office where he outlined all the safety protocol, safety protocol for their employees, safety protocol for customers. And there was nothing I could see in there that he was missing. And I wrote him back and said that. Unless I'm missing something, you guys are doing a fantastic job and I wholeheartedly agree. One of the items that was mentioned was the fact that Walmart is providing a mask to all associates and requiring their use at all times. I agree with that 100%. And I think that even if someone feels that a mask isn't going to make a whole lot of difference, there is a, a perception of safety, I think, that that gives. So if there's anything that we can do as a board or the Board of Health that can do to ask businesses, especially businesses that have anything to do with food handling, require their employees to wear masks and have obviously customers wear masks as well. I would also like to reiterate that everyone should sign up for Town News in code RED via the website. It's very, very easy to do. And I would also like to encourage residents to text COVIDmask, C-O-V-I-D-M-A, to 888-777 for Massachusetts alerts. You, you get to hear when Governor Baker is going to be doing his daily updates, all sorts of things. One good example of something that they sent out is if residents could please be encouraged to answer calls from area codes 833 and 866 from the Mass COVID team because they are beginning a contact tracing project. And I think it's, I believe it's the first in the country and I saw it being highlighted somewhere else on a national news program. So I would like to encourage that as well. But I think these little alerts that you get maybe once a day, so it's certainly not overwhelming by any means, but can be very informative. And it gives you links to click on and so forth. So I would like to encourage that as well. So that is my report.
Thank you, Leslie. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And like everybody's saying, thank you to everybody in, in the community that's doing their part to help us all get through this. You know, as Leslie said, you can't, you can't thank everybody. Just to reiterate a couple of things from, from the meeting tonight. If you're, if you're, if you're in Northborough and you, and you have the ability and you do want to support local businesses in town, the best way to do that is to spend money at the businesses. Call, get takeout, get delivery, you know, that, that's the best way to support our businesses in town is, is by giving them business. And then also from what June and Liz had to say, if you're in town and you know of somebody, an individual, family, household, that is in any need and they haven't been contacted, please let somebody know. Again, you know, as a community, the more that we work together, the more, the more successful we'll be in getting through this. That ends my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tim. Dawn?
And I'd just like to second all the thank yous. Can't say thank you enough, especially to the people continually continue to social distance, hoping to keep the spread of the virus at the minimum. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dawn. I'll just add my encouragement to try to sustain our local businesses to the extent you're able to make use of their services, keep the cash flowing. Could be big, it could be small, but every, every bit makes a difference. And likewise, if you're in a circumstance where you have available funds that you could make available through some of the services we have, the Benevolent Fund, Helping Hands, Sirloin Catering, American Legion, Borough's Cures for Troops. There's just many, many opportunities to provide some funding for the services that they're trying to offer to, to assist people. I wish I could order out a haircut because I'm quickly approaching a state which would be described as groovy from a previous era. So. There is one other item I would like to mention. We've been notified by Justin Souza, our veteran agent regarding the, what would normally be our Memorial Day ceremonies at the end of May. The simplest thing for me to do is read his communication, which was sent to John and to the town. "After a conference call yesterday with Francisco Urina, the Mass Secretary of Veteran Services, it is his recommendation that cities and towns do not hold traditional Memorial Day celebrations. In lieu of traditional events, it is my intent," this is Justin speaking, "to create a pre-recorded Memorial Day observation prior to the holiday tailored to Northborough that can be broadcast on the holiday for viewing through cable access and social media. Flags will still be placed upon graves as normal, but by people wearing PPE and observing social distancing protocols. We'd like to ask for your support in mandating that no traditional observance of the Memorial Day holiday take place and instead that an alternative digital experience be created in order to protect our town's people and their families from the ongoing pandemic." So from that perspective, the guidance we're receiving from our veterans agent in consultation with State Secretary of Veteran Services is not to have people gathering on the holiday to do the usual observance. And there will instead be, be a planned event, video recorded and presented by Justin and some additional people to provide the appropriate observance in a safe manner. So we will probably taking that approach and we'll provide more information about the details for that at a future time. That concludes my report. Anything more?
I'm not sure, Jason, you're, you're, you're cut out there at the end.
I'm sorry. I was just asking, I, I believe I completed the statement about not having the usual in-person Memorial Day observance.
We got all that.
Yeah. And then I was indicating that my report was concluded and asking you if you had anything to report tonight.
Very good. I didn't want to assume. So, so yeah, a couple, I just have a couple of things. Realizing that by not speaking to something leaves the door open for all kinds of speculation, especially on social media. I did want to mention to you, as I have been providing information, and we do continue to work on the fiscal '21 budget. I reported to you at your last meeting that the fiscal '20 budget, based on all our projections, the information we provided at your last meeting, that will finish in the black. We won't have as significant of a budget surplus as we would typically have, obviously because, you know, the economic elastic revenues like hotel meals taxes and motor vehicle excises is down. It's down for everybody. So in terms of the fiscal '21 budget, so as I mentioned, I'm on these conference calls at least weekly with the Lieutenant Governor and with all the managers across the state. The number one question that comes up is what is the status of the state fiscal '21 budget and what's happening with the town's local aid? Now, I mentioned at the last meeting why this is so critical to us. We went back historically and looked at, you know, what we have lost during different recessions in terms of state aid on a percentage basis. And the single largest reduction was 17% in the '03, '04 timeline. So 17% of our state aid right now is about a million dollars. That's a very significant amount of money. Now, we're, we're, we're doing various planning scenarios. I'm meeting daily with departments, meeting, I have a meeting tomorrow with the superintendent. So we're looking and we're planning for various scenarios. But I just want to share this comment that came out of the most recent conference call with state officials. And this is the Administration of Finance Undersecretary Catherine Hornby. And this is a direct quote from her. She says, "I realize that in the context of budgeting, what municipalities really would like is support from the state, obviously, and clarity with respect to the timeline. Unfortunately, we're, we at the state level are very much in the same position that we need clarity in order to move forward. And I think we're not quite there yet. And as I've shared to you and through some, some updates, essentially the $2.7 billion that's coming from the federal government to the state, they don't have clarity on exactly how the state can use those funds. And they don't have clarity on how much of that, we don't have clarity on how much of that is going to filter down to municipalities. So the big issue for the state is the vast majority, up to approximately two thirds of the budget, is Medicare and Medicaid expenses. And so the funds that have been approved at the federal level, the rules to regarding how those can be used and how they would potentially filter down, we're hoping to get some more information later this week. That is absolutely critical. The state cannot tell us what's happening with our state aid until they get that information and that clarity from the federal government. We can't come forward with a, with a budget until we have clarity from the state with regard to what are they going to do with our state aid? Because it's such a significant portion of our budget. Now, that doesn't mean that we aren't working behind the scenes. I provided an update and at your last meeting, we have various scenarios that we're looking at, depending on the level of state aid that comes through. We have a good handle on our, where we think our local receipts, motor vehicle excise are going to go. It's the state aid as the big open issue. And then the other is going to be, you know, the level of, of taxation. Unlike some of our neighboring communities, who, some of which were actually facing an override for fiscal '21, we have levy capacity. We have $2.2 million in levy capacity because we have not, for years, taxed to the limits in the max of Prop 2 and 1/2. So we've created through conservative budgeting a cushion for ourselves. Obviously, in order to access those funds, it means, you know, increasing taxes. So it's a balancing act between all these things. But as you know, we are, we are running these scenarios. When we get clarity from the state at an upcoming meeting, we'll start to walk through some of these scenarios with the, with the boards and the finance committees. I'm thinking perhaps the most efficient use of our time would be to do a format similar to what we do with the financial trend monitoring. Get all the boards and committees together, show you the forecast, show you the revenue information and start to have a discussion about where we, where we see things going. Town meeting right now is postponed to May 27th. It's, it's not going to happen on May 27th. That's the furthest that we could postpone 30 days under the legislation. So if we're looking at a town meeting in June or July or later than that, part of that's going to be, part of that's going to be determined by what the state does and what information they get and what moves they make as it relates to municipalities. So you're reading the paper, everybody's looking at all the things that they ought to be doing and we're doing the same thing. We're just not having those public discussions just yet because that state aid is a huge piece of that. And that will determine a significant portion of, of where we go. So we do have, as I said, we're working on this. We've got various scenarios. We're looking at all the departments we're meeting with. They all have various budget scenarios that they have created. And we've discussed with the Finance Director. And so as we get a little bit more information, we will package these things up as we always do for the financial boards and committees with various service level options based on different scenarios. But the real, the real bottom line here is, I think even any town that comes forward and adopts a budget in the next month or two, more than likely as things unfold, they're going to probably be looking at a special town meeting somewhere along fiscal '21. Because one of the things that we're stressing, we had a discussion tonight about the need for successive packages to assist businesses. We are going to need successive stimulus packages to support state and local governments. And, and we're going to need more information. So I don't think it's just going to be a, a one and done. This is going to be ongoing conversation and a development that's going to take place over at least. over at least the first half of fiscal twenty one, but potentially longer. So as soon as we get more information and a little bit of clarity to have a fruitful conversation, we will do so. So again, just in a vacuum, I don't want people to speculate that nothing's being done or that we're we're not aware of the financial implications. And again, this board, we've got senior members on this board, a lot of senior members on our financial boards and committees who have managed through not just one, but several recessions. And we, as a team, have managed through, since I've been here, two recessions. And we've done that quite well. And we've done it with excellent information and framing the issue for the boards and committees and giving options. This will be no, this will be no different. So so that's my update with regard to where things are with the budget. With the committee's indulgence, with the board's indulgence, I'd like to ask the chief to run a video, just again, as part of our outreach, that Kathy Delglish from Cable Access had put together. And hopefully, we'll be able to see this and hear it. But I think it's a nice message to the community that we're going to put out on local access and make it available through the webpage. So with the chair's indulgence, if I could ask Chief Parente to to roll the video.
Please proceed. Hey, guys, just come back to me if you can't hear it, but I think I can get it up. So give me a second.
So so hopefully that came through. And I and I think if you if you take nothing away from your meeting tonight, you've got a dedicated staff that cares about this community and we care about the people that are in it. And we get on to we get into this, got into this business because we want to make a difference. And so if you need something or you know of somebody that's in need, reach out to us. We're here to help. And we will do everything we can to to get you whatever assistance you need. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, John. Thank you very much, Chief Parente. Any other business to come before the board?
No other business this evening?
Yes, Chief Parente.
Sorry, I have to unmute myself. I just want to mention what I mentioned earlier before the meeting started, which is that during one of Governor Baker's press conferences, he brought in the three C CEOs of some of the biggest hospitals in the Commonwealth. Their main point was we're here for you still. In other words, don't wait to call if you are feeling ill. Don't wait to call if you think you're having a stroke or a heart attack or you have a diabetic problem. Those calls are all have all dropped a way down. And we have this huge concern that people aren't calling when they should be calling. So I just want to make sure, since I I have the ability to get out there and and push what Governor Baker was saying was, we're here for you. Don't wait. We're transporting some really sick people. These people are waiting. Please don't wait. Call us when you need us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chief. Chief Lieber, would you like to piggyback on that? You need to unmute, Chief.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I have to echo the same sentiment. Our calls to service are are way down, and I think people are not calling us for fear of they're we're busy doing other things. But I would like to add to what June and Liz were saying about having resources that after hours, our dispatch center is manned twenty four seven, and we have the same extensive list of contacts and resources. So if a senior or someone in town needs needs some assistance after hours, they can always call the police station on the main number of one five one five. I'm sure Chief Parente would offer the same thing. Because we are at both departments, some more quality of life type agencies, because we have the opportunity to serve the people in town. So we're available for that.
All right. Thank you very much. If there is no other business, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move re-adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded again a roll call vote. Julianne?
I.
Leslie?
I.
Tim?
I.
Dawn?
I.
And I am also an I. We are adjourned. Thank everybody very much for their contributions tonight.